Right, we're back in business now.
I'm not wearing my sticker, but I voted also.
I'm wearing mine proud.
Yeah.
All right, Chambers County Commissioners Court come to order. We are on that, Austin.
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's a regular meeting of the Commissioners' Court on twenty seventh day of October, uh, twenty twenty, court started, uh, was supposed to nine thirty AM, we're starting at nine thirty seven AM due to technical difficulties. Um, we're gonna start out by having a prayer. You can lay this. Muted, Cor.
Okay. Yes, sir. Dear only Father, we just, uh, we thank you. You're an awesome God. We just, uh, thank you for watching over us. We thank you for your protection. Lord, we just, uh, come to you today as, uh, as we meet as a court, just, uh, ask, Lord, that you just, uh, watch over us, that you guide our decision making and allow us to make good decisions for the, uh, the public of Chambers County. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Johnson pledges, I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one.
Calm down, Austin.
Sorry, Judge, I'm so excited.
Okay, this regular meeting agenda, we're gonna have a couple of updates this morning. One's going to be one point one is, uh, update, uh, Commissioner Gore had a good idea the first time in four years. Um, he, he thought it'd be a good idea, which, and I agree with him, that we have a department, each Commissioners' Court, give them about ten minutes to talk about their department, uh, you know, their budget, what they do, and those kind of things, so. Uh, the first one's going to be mosquito control, but we're gonna start out with, uh, Mary Beth Bess and get a COVID nineteen update. Mary Beth, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, thank you for having me here this morning. So I'll just give a general update with numbers. I'm gonna start this morning. Uh, we have our active case number is down to sixty one in the county, so we're really excited about that. Uh, but I will give an update about that. So we have sixty one active cases. Our hospitalizations are down to three. Uh, and our, our death number is, uh, we're at twenty losses in the county. So what I do want to say about that is I know that everyone is watching the news right now. Uh, we have a, of course, an election going on, so everyone is kind of glued to the TV. But I'm sure everyone is aware that cases are going up nationwide, uh, globally, they're going up. I think Italy is having a really hard time right now. So I do want everyone to be aware, and I don't want anyone to get just complacent. Uh, hospitalizations are going up nationwide. Texas is kind of starting to see some of that. There's some hotspots in Texas. Luckily, right now here in Chambers County, we're doing really well, and I don't want that to go away. So I don't want, I know we've talked about COVID fatigue, uh, and I know that everyone has it, but we, we just can't let our guard down. And so, uh, I just really want to push that message. The schools are working extremely hard. Again, I've said it every time, we've got a great relationship with the schools. We had a, um, teams meeting with the school nurses at Barbers Hill last week. Uh, they're, they're working really hard. All the schools are. East Chambers hasn't had any new cases, I think, in three weeks. Um, Anawak has done extremely well. Barbers Hill, their mitigation efforts are, they've got a big school district. They're working extremely hard. So, um, we have to keep the schools safe. So those education thing, those education points that parents should be making through their kids, um, masking, social distancing, those gatherings, especially if it gets colder outside. Um, we don't want that to hit our county and our numbers go up. You know, we saw it happen in June and July. We had another spike in September to the first part of October. So let's just be good examples and, and spread that message. Um, flu, we are currently out of flu shots. I mean, we, we gave more flu shots in September to the first part of October than we've ever done. Our flu shipment is currently on back, our second half of our flu shipment is on back order. Uh, that was because of the hurricane and they just delayed shipment. So I think we have a hundred and sixty more, um, shots on the way. They're on back order. So as soon as we give those, we know that those are gonna go again. So it's likely that we'll have to put another order in. People want the flu shots and CDC really is encouraging those this year because we don't want to overwhelm the, the, um, the healthcare system with flu cases in the hospitals.
Should we go ahead and put that order in now?
So, yes, sir. So that was an email to you today and a phone call to you today, too, is we want to go ahead and get another order in because, again, we've never had given this many flu shots again, um, this early in the season. Um, we also will start reporting flu. Um, all of our healthcare providers in the county, the school districts, they will also start reporting their flu to us this week. Uh, we get this question often, and so you'll know in case you get this question as a Commissioner or the judge. Um, the, the school districts, all the healthcare providers, they always report the flu to us. It's not a reportable condition, but so we can actively monitor the flu in our county. We always, they always report to us, and then we send this up to DSHS, and then anyone can monitor this, um, on texasflu.org. Um, you can go back and look at every year in the past and see this information. But because people want to know, we will also post this on our Facebook page and on the website so they can see COVID cases and flu cases, but we've always done this. And just so you'll know also, we've not had any flu deaths, um, in Chambers County as, as long as I can remember, but there's not been any fully reported deaths in Chambers County. Um, I know in the past several years, but also just so you'll know for your information as well, is that since flu is not a reportable condition, um, sometimes those deaths just don't get reported, but sometimes they get reported as pneumonia. Um, and so sometimes those things are kind of intertwined together, but we will monitor this and post it. So if you get that question, just you can let people know that. Lastly, all I have to say is, is that, um, we are moving forward with, people want to know about COVID vaccines. Um, Thursday, an email will go out to all local healthcare providers on how they can register to give the COVID vaccine. You have to be registered to give that vaccine out. So, um, we have been working on our website for just, um, providers in the county. That will go live as soon as we have our webinar. So an email will go out this Thursday. We're working with Austin and IT to upgrade our email system to our local healthcare providers. Um, so that will go out this Thursday. We'll have our webinar next week. So I'll answer any questions.
Hey, Mary Beth.
Yes, sir.
Um, on that flu shot, now I see Bayside is doing some as well, because I know, I think they're scheduled to come out to, uh, Gore propane this week. Uh, are you seeing a lot more numbers of, of individuals that haven't taken it before, taken it, or just the same ones county and as well as citizens?
So I would say it's probably a, uh, an, an even mix. Sometimes it's really hard to gauge. You know, so far what we've done is, um, a lot of people who schedule through us, school districts, businesses, and county employees is what we've done a lot of. But then a lot of people who currently already come in have just come in earlier, and we got our first shipment earlier than what we usually do. And so they just came in earlier. So the second shipment, I just feel like because there's been a delay, that they will also come in sooner. The good thing about Bayside doing their, um, satellite clinics is that they will bill through, uh, Medicaid, um, and se- and we, which we don't, so they will be able to, uh, and give those free or at no charge or at a small fee. So we encourage anyone, wherever you can get it, go ahead and get that flu shot.
Thank you, ma'am.
So is that your recommendation, Mary Beth? I mean, I've heard them right advertise on the radio like CVS and different, doing flu shots, and, uh, you recommend it that, uh, that the ones that hadn't had it, go ahead and can, you know, proceed.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and get it. Ours is fifteen dollars across the board, but if anyone can go ahead and get it, go ahead and get that. Yes, definitely.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, anybody else have anything? Mary Beth, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For all y'all doing over there.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, and the team's working hard, so thank you.
I know they are. Tell them we're.
Thanks, Mary Beth.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, we'll have election update from, uh, Heather later this morning. Let's go to one point one, discuss and consider department update. Austin, if you'll let mosquito control.
Uh, they're on my voice. Uh, Lawrence and, uh, Phager, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, y'all, y'all can go ahead and share your screen when you're ready.
It's a big old mosquito. I'm hoping we get those.
That's an older, that's an older of a mosquito.
That's a cope, that's a cope mosquito too, Judge.
Yes, sir. Um, good morning.
Good morning, Lawrence.
Yes, sir. Um, uh, gentlemen, here's an overview of mosquito control department and employees. Mosquito control has five full-time employees and two contract pilots. All employees are licensed through the Texas Department of Agriculture. This certifies, this certification allows us to dispense chemicals into the public. The department has two part-time shifts, AM and PM. The AM shift starts at three thirty AM until eight thirty AM. The PM shift starts at seven PM until eleven thirty PM. The purpose for a mosquito control department, Chambers County mosquito control department protects the health and well-being of county residents through surveillance, control, education, research, and, and technology to prevent and control mosquito-borne diseases and population growth. Control operations to combat mosquitoes. Surveillance of mosquitoes, adult mosquito control, elimination of mosquito breeding sites, ground and arrow spray, support of community outreach, identify adult mosquitoes, and continuing education. We also perform several different types of surveillance. The New Jer- the New Jersey light traps. These traps are set throughout the county to monitor adult mosquito activity in the neighborhoods. Second, mosquito landing rate counts. Landing rates are used to measure adult mosquito activity in a specific area. This is achieved by counting enough on mosquitoes that land on a person in any given amount of time, usually one minute. Third, we do home inspections. Inspectors visit your property to identify possible breeding areas such as bird baths, flower pots, debris field gutters, rain barrels, pool covers, standing puddles, animal drinking water receptors, shallow ponds, abandoned or neglected swimming pools or hot tubs, deep hollow in trees. Any item that can hold water for extended periods of time can reduce large numbers of mosquitoes. Once we collect surveillance, there's two types of equipment used to treat mosquitoes. We spread adult size by trucks with mounted spray units and by airplane. Our airplane allows us to cover more areas at one given time. Our ground spray units are calibrated to maintain an accurate dropping size. This allows us to control and monitor how much pesticide is being applied. Like all pesticides, our adult size are regulated by the EPA and are dispersed by our certified pesticide applicators. Here's a picture of the ground equipment used. Our team drives green spray trucks that help residents easily identify Chambers County mosquito control. We have several spray trucks and spray units. Each spray truck is equipped with a GPS that allows us to track which areas have been sprayed. Our spray information is recorded and helps mosquito control plan future routes. Here's a picture of the mosquito control airplane. Arrow spraying is used safe, uses safe amounts of adult size in areas where mosquitoes are heavily populated. Arrow spraying is very effective and able to cover more acres in a shorter amount of time. We treat two hundred and fifty-six thousand acres in Chambers County. Factors that would not allow us to spray: rain, heavy fog, winds over ten miles an hour would not allow the chemical to land in the target areas. We will not allow to spray the same area more than once in twenty-four hours. It's the state law.
Technical difficulties. It is frozen.
Oh, no.
Mm-hmm. How to stop raising mosquitoes?
Uh, Judge, give us just a second.
It happens to all of us, Lawrence.
Okay, we're back. How to stop raising mosquitoes in your yard and home? Mosquitoes need water to breed and grow. It doesn't take much water and it doesn't take much time. So almost any time that, anything that holds water for one week or more can reduce these pests. Remove sources of standing water such as empty containers, tires, pots, wheelbarrows, and anything else that could hold water. Repair leaking sprinklers or outside faucets. Clean out clogged rain gutters. Change the water in bird baths, pet dishes, water troughs at least twice a week. Keep trash containers covered so they don't accumulate water. Maintain and keep your pool treated. Don't let pool covers retain water. Uh, Judge, now I would like to introduce our new office manager. Her name is Paige Russell.
Good morning, buddies. Morning.
Spray can either be requested aerial or truck by phone at four oh nine two six seven twenty-seven twenty or on the Chambers County website under mosquito control department.
Judge, uh, now, uh, if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
All right, any questions for Lawrence or Paige? Paige, welcome to the county. Uh, Lawrence, thank you for, uh, volunteering to be the guinea pig for the first department update in Commissioners' Court. You heard me say volunteering, right?
Hi.
All right, you guys have any questions on mosquito control? Lawrence, you didn't mention what else y'all do as far as, uh, uh, pests in the building, in buildings, in county buildings.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Somebody wave if you hear us.
Can we? Can, can you hear me, Lawrence? Paige?
They must have hung up.
Technical.
To you, Judge.
Lawrence?
They're there. They also do the water well stuff in the county as well, Judge.
Yeah, they didn't mix the water well. Um, they, they're charged with checking all the water wells in county and then, um, uh, bug control, uh, in the buildings, in county buildings, and I think that's pretty much everything that's.
Are they back? Lewis, can you hear us?
Lawrence?
I'm here.
Hmm, don't know.
They're saying they, they can't hear anything, so.
I'll ask my questions later.
Hang on just a minute. Let me see if I can get him.
I don't know why it's not working. How about now? Can y'all hear us?
Yes.
Again?
Okay.
All right, so, um, Lawrence?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, a couple of things, you did mention that what you do is water wells and what you do to the buildings, um, and, uh, the, the grounds as far as, um, uh, pest control.
Okay, um, of course, uh, mosquito control department is also responsible for, uh, pest control in any county buildings or any grounds that the county owns. We also do, uh, water wells. We take care of six water wells that's located on the west side at all the community buildings that supply public, uh, water to the public. Uh, we also, uh, do, uh, work on our own equipment here at the shop, uh, for its calibration, adjusting flow rates, uh, setting up systems. Everything is done here at the mosquito control. Uh, Judge, I think that's about wraps it up.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Collins, you had a question?
Yes, sir, I did. Uh, uh, Lawrence, how many of the New Jersey light traps do you have out in the county and where are they?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, they are all throughout the county in each part of the county. So we have fourteen, uh, spray zones, and we have fourteen light traps set in each part of the county.
Okay, so you have one, uh, one trap per spray zone?
Yes, sir. We have fourteen, yes, sir. We have one trap per zone. And that helps us identify the mosquito in that area.
In, in Lawrence, tell them there are some areas you can't spray.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, we spray, as a, as a whole in the county, is two hundred and fifty-six thousand acres. The only areas that we cannot spray is the national of the wildlife area. We can spray up to a half a mile in any direction of the wildlife refuge, but not over it or on it, but we are allowed to go out and set traps and monitor mosquito activity on the wildlife refuge.
Did you say two hundred and fifty-six thousand acres?
Yes, sir. Uh, in those fourteen zones that we sprayed over the whole county, uh, Brad and I worked on it, and we got the acres down, and it was a total of two hundred and fifty-six thousand acres.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Judge.
And, and you don't, and you don't spray over those, uh, frac units? The industry.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We, yeah, we, uh, uh, the pilots are instructed to also stay a half a mile from, uh, over industries.
Okay, Lawrence, on your spray zone, it appeared that you're really not catching the, uh, Highway one forty-six corridor in the Baytown area either. Is that, is that correct, or are you actually spraying that?
Uh, we actually spray, uh, up to, we use that as a boundary because of just west of one forty-six, it has some high, high line wires imposed, so the pilot is not comfortable, uh, spr- uh, going over the top of that. So we use that one forty-six. If you, uh, going north and south, the east of one forty-six, we use it as, as a boundary, and he doesn't go any further west. So we most, uh, we put trucks in those areas in the morning shifts because of the, uh, uh, the high traffic.
All right.
So Lawrence, is that a difference in mosquitoes out during the day and mosquitoes that come out at night?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, the ma- the majority of, uh, mosquitoes are out during the PM areas, but you do have uh, mosquitoes that are, are, are during the AM hours, and, and those are your daytime flowers. Uh, eighties apple pictus, eighties agyphtir, and some of your culec quincofaciatus. Uh, those are.
That's what I, exactly what I was thinking, those were called.
Yeah, so, uh, and, and those mosquitoes are usually, uh, uh, raised on these, on residents' property. Uh, that's why those dog bowls, brain, uh, bird baths, rain gutters, low line areas that could hold water. And that's the main reason why we go out and do these, uh, home inspections.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions? Lawrence, anything else?
Uh, yes, sir, just, just one more thing. Uh, I most definitely want to, uh, say thank you to, uh, of course, Commissioners' Court for working with us, and I want to be a special thank you to, uh, the full-time employees here that work at mosquito control. They work a lot of hours. And, and of course, we wouldn't be able to survive without our part-time help on the AM and PM. So mosquito control and, uh, uh, here, we want to say thank you to all those guys. We really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Uh, good job on our, our first, uh, department head update, and thank you, Paige. Thank you, Lawrence.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, that went well. We'll, we'll have a list of those if, um, we'll leave it to alphabetical order or, or something from here out. I thought we'd get Lawrence in since we're right at the end of mosquito season, but we, uh, we still have mosquitoes, so a good time to get him in and let him explain what his department does. All right, let's go down. Uh, Mike Leslie's here, so let's go down to maintenance and buildings. Seven point one, discuss and consider the purchase of modular building, Satellite Shelters Incorporated for one hundred and sixty-four six six seven, house auditor and treasurer's office, the fourteen offices, and additional fees to set up. Mike?
Yes, Judge. This, we're, we're looking at, obviously, moving, uh.
Can y'all hear Mike? Okay?
Sure can, Judge.
Okay.
He's speaking my mind.
Go ahead, Mike.
We're looking at moving offices around, you know, taking people out of the courthouse, moving people in the courthouse. Um, this modular building that we're looking at.
I lost him.
Billy said he lost you. Uh, yeah, something's wrong with the system. Come on up here, Mike. Mike's making his way. Um, one of the main things we're trying to do with the new county court of law coming in, uh, here at the courthouse, we're trying to get the judicial offices back in the courthouse where they belong and move all the financial offices out. You know, that was the plan all along. Um, we built the justice center, we'd move judicial offices over there. The current courthouse would be, um, offices, financial, IT, and the rest of them, so. I'm gonna get, let, let Mike sit here.
Hey, Judge, I did want to go ahead and say it looks like Commissioner, uh, Tice fell out of the meeting, so I'll work on.
All right, so Commissioner Tice for the moment's out. Mike, if you'll go ahead.
Okay, so, in the process of moving some people around uh, out of the courthouse, moving some people in the courthouse, we had a chance to buy, uh, this complex, uh, modular building complex, this, uh, six trailers. It was set up at Exxon, and, uh, we can get it for a pretty good price. It will give us twelve to fourteen offices plus two big, uh, areas that we could break up into, uh, offices also. And in the, in the whole scheme of things, we've kind of worked out a little process of, uh, how we can move people to certain, certain areas. Uh, so anyway, that's what we have so far.
So actually, that, this would, uh, free up some offices on these moves. We would have, I think, three or four vacant offices, uh, once everybody gets moved. So that would be something different that I hadn't seen in years. IT would be all together in one building. Uh, auditor treasurer would be together. The auditor would all be together, his offices would all be together in one building, uh, along with the treasurer. That way, they need to be in the same building. Um, uh, purchasing will have some room instead of four office. They would move to the west side and have, um, five offices, so they'd all have an office. So Judge.
We'll get HR into the, uh, courthouse.
Yeah, Sylvia would move, uh, health services, she would move to the, to the receptionist area. Glenn would move into HR office. And HR would move in the person, and for, we'd free up IT's office, we'd free up the auditor's offices downstairs next to IT. You're saying. They got that all in writing, so. Mr. Gore. Are you saying purchasing, all of purchasing moving to the west side? They would move into the auditor's office on the west side, yes. They would make deliveries as needed. Of course, a lot of folks that have worked from the west side and come over here to stop by there and pick up the purses, or they would make deliveries, uh, to the office.
the purchases or they would make deliveries to the office. I think it's a fix. For the record, Ms. Hawthorne says she thinks it's brilliant.
Mike, can you go over the incidental expenses there too? It's gonna take to set all this stuff up? Parking lots and stuff like that.
Got the list of them. Eric, you had that. We looked at it yesterday. No, it's in that.
Hang on just a second. I'm sorry. Gave her the numbers, but let me review them.
It's not bad.
I'm just trying to get a total. I'm just trying to get a total of what we're talking about.
Seventy-five thousand is what he's got on the packet.
Right. And these are just, these are just numbers. I put for a select field pad thirty thousand dollars. You know, possibly we can do it for less than that. I didn't want to give y'all numbers that were, you know, too low. I feel pretty confident about water, sewer and electric of twenty thousand dollars because we've gone through that process with the two modular units that we're gonna put in over here near the courthouse. And then you got walks, ramps, awnings that I'm gonna have to put in. And then we put another ten thousand dollars in for IT and communications.
And these buildings were at Exxon, so they should have all the drops, the IT drops and everything that's needed for IT, for phone and IT.
Roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand.
Do what?
Roughly about two hundred and fifty thousand for the buildings and to get them set up.
Seven-five and a hundred and sixty-five, yeah.
Yes. And the reason that we're gonna put it in the area that we're gonna put it is so we can utilize the parking that's already there for is the auditor's office now. I guess it was the old annex.
County attorney's office now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that moves IT out there next to communications to work together every day. So that'd be another plus. It's just all the IT will be together. I don't think I mentioned that. Derek and Taylor would move from the west side back into the offices with the other IT folks. So that'll be, so the auditor'd all be together and IT would all be together in one office.
Does IT have the infrastructure there that they need?
Austin can answer that.
Yes, sir. I believe we've got everything that we would need there to support anything that we need. So I don't have any particular concerns about the availability of any kind of infrastructure for us at that location.
Yeah, we ran, what's the T-one line?
We've got private fiber over there.
We've got fiber. I talked to Derek about it last week.
Thanks, Judge.
I guess so.
Thank you, Mike. Questions?
Yeah, the budgeting for this is coming out of the.
Capital contingency, the balance on capital contingency is a half million. Right now, of course, then this will come out of that capital contingency line out.
Is that where the other, I mean, we're purchasing two other buildings. Is that where that's coming from also?
Yes, it is Commissioner. If you remember, that's where we had moved about a million dollars or so. So in that capital account, plus the additional that we have now. If y'all buy this, we would have about two eighty-eight left and that would go for all the incidentals like electricity, furniture if needed, things like that.
So all three of these units that we're buying, this one here, roughly two hundred and fifty thousand, the one for the county court at law and then one for the DA, we're looking at a total of about how much?
Were they two, you recall what these two, other two were? I think they were, those were new. So there were more. And of course, the county court at law is brand new. So it's gonna take more to set it up to be a county court at law than what we had, than these other buildings that are all.
I would think that we'd already budgeted for that. I would have think they'd already be out of that contingency item, line item, I would think.
They are, Gary.
So so far, we, you know, with all the portable buildings and the parking lot, we're at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
With these two buildings?
Yes.
With three parking areas. Of course, we're building parking lots there too for these, for both buildings and the other building. I mean, and the other parking lot west, east of the courthouse. This one, you shouldn't have, very little parking should have to be built. Maybe right up next to the building because we've got so much parking at the current county attorney's office, OTBCD building.
So Judge, are you looking at doing this one out of the 2020 budget?
No, sir, out of the capital contingency budget for this year.
Okay.
Now, with those being in Comber, we still have half a million dollars in that capital contingency.
Well, according to my numbers, you'll have two hundred and eighty thousand left.
Yeah, that's right.
Close to three hundred, yeah.
You looking for a motion?
I am, and I think it'll solve our problem for a long time. Maybe, Gary, maybe motion up to two hundred thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Question by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Gore. Those in favor? Those, motion carries.
Are she trying to get him out of the courthouse?
I think so.
Well, one other thing it's gonna do is, and I didn't mention it, is it'll be all judicial offices in the courthouse. So you know, guns in the courthouse and those issues with offices in here that aren't connected to the courts. So now they'll all be connected to the courts once this is done. Moving on. Thank you, Mike. Lauren. Let's go ahead and go to Heather and get an election update, Ms. Hawthorne. Here, come here.
Good morning, everyone. It's good to see your faces. I hate we've been distanced.
I like it masked.
Can you hear me okay or you want me to take it off?
Take it off. There you go. There's Heather.
Hey, hey. Okay, the number of registered voters we have in the county as of October the fifth. And so that was the deadline for registration. Just remember, that number has gone up. But according to our poll pads, the number is thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven. The reason that number has gone up is we have worked with the voter registrar's office and they received voter applications to register to vote in Chambers County that were postmarked prior to October the fifth. And so those people currently are on what we call an omissions list or, you know, that they are registered. It just didn't make the cut for the poll pad deadline. So we, they are, so I believe that that number's right at thirty thousand, eight hundred and something. So, you know, give or take seven fifty-seven is what we're at now. So far, we've had fourteen thousand, four hundred and eight in-person voting.
You broke up, what'd you say?
Fourteen thousand, four oh eight in-person.
Great. That's almost fifty percent.
Forty-six percent, Gary. Good job on that SMU math. We've had six hundred and two mail ballots, which is not the fourteen four oh eight. So that was in-person. Six hundred and two mail ballots that we've received. We sent out over a thousand. So we're looking forward to that, those coming back. We've had forty-nine FPCA, that's our military and overseas registered voters. So a total so far we've received back as of this morning prior to the mail would be six hundred and fifty-one total mail-in ballots. We're open seven to seven all week at all four locations. If anybody needs those locations, you can go to the county website. And all those locations and addresses are on the county website under the elections tab. And I don't know, I want you to have these numbers. I think I emailed them to you last night, but it'd be probably good to have them on the record. Precinct one, six hundred and twenty-three registered voters and we've had two hundred and seventy-four. So that's forty-three point nine percent. Precinct two, there's eight hundred and sixty registered voters. So far, two hundred and fifty-three have turned out. That's twenty-nine percent. Precinct three, four hundred and eighty-three voters, a hundred and eighty-one at thirty-seven percent. Precinct four, amazingly, three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine, twenty-one fifteen have already voted, which is fifty-four percent of precinct four. Precinct five, the Beach City area is twenty-five oh nine registered and twelve fourteen have voted, which is forty-eight percent. Precinct six is mid-county. It is twenty-two hundred and eighty-three registered voters with one thousand and nine have voted, which is forty-four percent. Precinct seven, the Winnie area is twenty-four, twenty-four registered voters with nine hundred and ninety-nine. So let's make that happen today. Precinct seven, forty-one percent. Precinct eight is the Cove area and is four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two registered voters with twenty-four, ninety-four already have voted, which is fifty percent. Precinct nine is the Oak Island area, four hundred and six registered voters, one hundred and forty-four have already turned out. That was thirty-five percent. Precinct ten is Bellevue and a little south of I-ten, fifty-four hundred and ten voters registered. Twenty-six hundred and fourteen have turned out, forty-eight percent. Precinct eleven is one forty-six on the west side of one forty-six, twenty-three hundred and forty-one registered voters. Seventy-one turning out at forty-five percent. Twelve is the south side of the Winnie area, fifteen hundred and forty-six registered voters. Six hundred and twenty-three have turned out, forty percent. Precinct fourteen is mid-county. There's five hundred and fourteen registered voters and two hundred and thirty-two, which brings a total of forty-five percent. And finally, precinct fifteen, which is the west side of, sorry, the east side of Highway one forty-six. And that is twenty-six hundred and seventy-three registered voters with a thousand, fifty-three turned out. So it's at thirty-nine percent. Unbelievable turnout. And two weeks of early voting from eight to five. This week, we're hopefully gonna capture all of those that work shift work or eight to five doesn't work out for them, seven to seven. Because we'd sure, sure, sure like to see that early vote number come in very strong. So that election day will go as smoothly as early voting. We have had little trouble at the polls. And we are always appreciative of everyone that's on this team to make this a success. From everybody, from our custodians have done an amazing job keeping everything clean and safe. We have moved those early voting locations to larger buildings that can accommodate everybody safely with the pandemic. Machines are spread out six feet apart. Poll workers have on masks. There's hand sanitizer. There's all the CDC guidelines that are there in place to make every Chambers County voter feel safe.
And is that, Ms. Heather?
Yes.
Can you touch a little bit on like handicap voters? I know y'all doing a great job of having them go out to the vehicles and stuff like that.
Absolutely. So I will tell you this before I say that, Jimmy. I had a fellow county clerk that texted me this morning from the Panhandle and she said curbside voting is no fun in minus six degrees. All of us are grateful that we don't live in the Panhandle. We love them. So curbside voting is available if you need assistance in any way. If you don't need getting out of your car, we will bring the voting equipment out to you. This is something we've done for years. And again, it will be done in a very safe manner. There are phone numbers at every one of the four early voting locations that when you pull up, you call the number. And then they'll come out and check you in and then bring the voting equipment out to you. We've also had a new, oh, go ahead, Jimmy. I'm sorry.
I know. They're saying y'all doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And we also have a new option this year that we've not had is you can hand deliver your vote. If you received a mail ballot and you would like to bring it in person to turn in, you can bring it here to the county courthouse. But the kicker is, is that you can only bring your own ballot. So you cannot bring your, if it's a husband and wife team, you can't bring your spouse's ballot out them being present. Because it's just like everything else, we have to check the ID of that person bringing their ballot in. Excuse me, and match it up to the ballot that we sent out.
This is also the first election that we can't hit straight ticket.
And you, yes, and there is no straight party voting in Texas any longer. So it does take a little bit longer to go through the ballot, but we seem to be moving people very quickly. Goss Library on the west side has voted about a thousand people a day all last week. Yesterday, it was a little slower across the county. I don't know.
Only nine hundred and ninety-nine yesterday.
Yeah, I don't know if it's because, you know, it was a Monday or whatever. But obviously, as the week progresses, we're gonna see those numbers go up. And typically, there are precincts that the voters go on election day and the story because the poll for them is literally less than probably a mile or two. And it's just more convenient for them.
Yeah, and some of them just like to vote on.
And we have those people that just like to vote on.
So do you recall what the numbers, the percentage was for general election two years ago?
No, and I will get those numbers and send out. I think in the primary, y'all, in March, we voted for some reason, eighty-five, nine thousand sticks in my head. So, you know, we are well above that just in early voting for the general. And I will actually send everybody out the twenty sixteen, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty so far. And of course, those results are also on our website under past elections. If you just want to do the research yourself.
Now, go ahead, Gary. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna mention, Heather, you might want to remind everybody that they're not allowed where people that are on the ballots, materials. We had a little excitement over here, first part.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Okay, great reminder, Gary. Thank you. So Texas election law does not allow a voter within a hundred feet of the polling location to do what's called electioneering. Electioneering is when you are supporting a candidate or a measure on the ballot. Because we, that electioneering also means your clothing. So no hats, no shirts, nothing that would represent a candidate or nothing that that candidate has in their slogan or their number. None of those can be worn. So we typically, if we have a voter show up, we ask them to step in the restroom and change their shirt inside out. Or we ask them to take their cap off. And yes, we've had some diehards that were kind of upset by that, but they complied because it is it is law. And it's not Heather's law, it's a state law. And that way, everybody walks into those polls, no matter what party you're voting for, no matter what candidate. And you have no voter intimidation, nobody. It's our freedom and I'm all for it.
Heather, can you, election, election night, can you touch a little bit where people need to go to look at results and how and what they, with the early votes and then how election day would go so people don't bombard you too much? and how and what they, with the early votes and then how election day would go so people don't bombard you too much, which I will.
Thank you. Thank you for the reminder. So about six years ago, I guess, or four, for sure, probably six, we closed the courthouse for safety reasons after five o'clock. Really, there's nobody that has any business in the courthouse. With modern technology, we don't post things on the talk board in the district courtroom like we did all days. That's right. And so all election results can be found on the county website. They will be posted. I promise you, I promise you, we're not holding back election results. They will be posted as soon as they get in. We always try to have those early vote numbers done by seven P M. So that that's your first notice that will be posted and then as the boxes come in. So I think the general public needs to realize that if the box is coming from Smith Point to Anawak or, um, Cedar Bow to Anawak, it's a, it's a thirty-minute drive just to get here and, but they have so many duties to take care of before they leave the poll. If you are in line on election night at seven P M., we will have those that will stand there at each poll and cut off, cut off the line because you have to draw the line somewhere. If you're in the building at seven P M., you'll still be allowed to vote. So in the past, we've always had voters still in the building and it may take a little longer this time due to the fact there's no straight party voting. So we hope that, you know, in my grand goal of things, by ten o'clock, we want this election in the can and we can all watch the national results.
So do you have to be in the building or just in line to vote, I said?
So usually what we do, which is a great question, we try to pull anybody that's in line in the building and then lock the door so that it is officially you were in line. If you're in the parking lot and driving up at seven oh one, you don't count.
Okay, two questions then, Heather. If you're going to pull people in the building, I don't think this year we'll be able to do that because of social distancing. So it may be a little different.
Um, it may be. It depends, Commissioner. It depends on if there's two people in line. Obviously, it's really easy to pull in the building. If there's forty people in line, then no, it won't be. We're supposed to have a gorgeous election day. We have checked the forecast already. And then what we have are people standing there and saying, you are the last voter. So that way, anybody else that walks up and we get all those people to those bigger precincts where those lines tend to be, then we lock the door once we get them down to that.
Cedar Bow, I've seen it at seven o'clock, which is crazy.
Cedar Bow typically has, because it's got two precincts voting in that building, uh, it typically has, um, a line after seven.
All right.
Appreciate, go ahead.
On the, or something you might, but mail-in ballots? I'm sorry, Gary, go ahead.
No, I just, I just mentioned the fact that there, there may be a way that you could, uh, you know, we could strip some paper or colored paper or something and hand them out, you know, where they would, where somebody can come up and get one, you know, I mean, it just, you know, he got, you got a piece of paper that was stripped or something.
Wristband.
Or, or a ticket. That would identify them that would, you know, there wouldn't be somebody slip up in the line or something.
Okay, that's a great idea. We have, I think, uh, wristband and we can take care of that for sure. We have some, so that's a great idea.
Heather, you have another question?
Yeah, I did. You'd mentioned about the mail-in ballots. If we receive a mail-in ballot, that you could bring it to the courthouse, but you have to have your ID and only one. How do you do that with a ma- mail ballot you receive? You're not getting an ID with it. How do you know? How do you verify that one?
So Billy, that, um, so the, the people that walk in their ballot, it's still considered a mail ballot that we, that, but this is part of the new process of the election code. Brand new rules set out by the governor for this election only. We'll see if it turns in, the legislature turns it into a law or not. So obviously, when I mail you a ballot, obviously, that's what you requested. And so you mail it back and it's great. When the ballots go to the ballot board, which will meet starting on Monday this year instead of on election day, because we have so many, the ballot board takes the application that they asked for their ballot by mail to begin with and matches it. I feel like Jack, Jack's been doing compound words. Matches the application to the signature on the envelope that we received. And so that's kind of the ID. All the applications that we've received, obviously, we've made sure they're a registered voter and in which precinct, obviously, to send them the correct ballot.
Ms. Heather?
Go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry. Was you finished?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I, I think I asked you this once before, but because my neighbor requested a mailing ballot. Say he doesn't receive that mallet ballot for whatever reason, mail. Okay, anyway, um, he comes in to vote, but he's already requested one in the mail. What's the procedure on that?
Great question. So if a ballot by mail voter has not received their mail ballot, A, we sure would like to know about it. So if they could contact the county clerk's office and that way we can kind of backtrack on when their ballot was mailed and kind of do a little research that way. The crunch time's coming and it's election day, then they can fill out an affidavit that says, I have never received the ballot and we can allow them to vote in person. Obviously, that affidavit, those affidavits are taken very seriously by the Attorney General's office. So we just try to make sure that everything with mail ballots is, excuse me, totally transparent because we don't want anybody to get a call from the office of the Attorney General for election fraud. So we want to make sure that they truly did not receive their ballot. And one other way you can vote is if you received that mail ballot and you've decided that you don't want to drive to Anawak to give it to us or that you'd really just rather vote in person. A lot of people apply for that ballot by mail back in January, what's called an annual application, and we send them a ballot for every election they're eligible for. They've forgotten, they asked for that in January, whatever reason, they can surrender the mail ballot at the polling location and vote in person. Every ballot we mail is, are, are, have in our possession right now is a live ballot. And so we want to be accountable for every single ballot that Chambers County owns. If you are new to our county and you were registered in your prior county during early voting only, you have four days left. You can go to the courthouse and vote what's called a limited ballot. As, as Americans, we say, it doesn't matter what state you live in, you ought to be able to vote for the president. As Texans, we say, uh, it doesn't matter if you live in El Paso or Anawak, you ought to be able to vote for any statewide office. On a limited ballot, it's just that. We match up from your county if we have any common races. If there are no common races, those are the, is the, uh, measures or candidates you get to vote for. If, for example, you move from Harris County to Chambers County, we have a lot of commonalities. First and fourteenth Court of Appeals and we have, uh, we share state senator. We share state rep with Galveston. So if you move from Galveston County, you could vote on that. But in a limited ballot, you cannot vote for any local, uh, races. Y'all have just, I've just put y'all through election boot camp.
Election one oh one.
We'll have boot camp, speaking of poll worker training, Saturday, Halloween, from nine A M. to one at, one at one A M., maybe that one, nine A M. to one P M. at White's Park. And again, during training, we practice social distancing and I've had Mary Beth come to three trainings now and she'll be there again to just make sure we all understand the pandemic is real.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I guess he's kicking me out.
I am. We got somebody supposed to call in.
Bye.
Thanks, Heather.
Heather, and our sincere thanks to all the workers too, yourself and election workers. Okay, so it's ten thirty or ten thirty-seven. Mr. Lynn Davis was wanting to discuss an item on the agenda, which is, uh, under executive session twenty point two. And we're, he is on the line. We're going to go to executive session and let him and Scott Peel in, county attorney. So at ten thirty-eight A M., we will recess our regular session of Commissioners Court, go into executive session to consider twenty point one, purchased off on one point four acres of county property located twelve ten East Winfrey Avenue in Mont Belvieu, Texas. To discuss, consider mending the lease of airport property for that, for, for Anawak Airport, uh, point oh seven five six acre tract entered into September of two thousand and nineteen. So we will recess to executive session at this time.
All right, you're a good judge.
All right, Commissioners Court, come to order after executive session. It's ten forty-eight A M. Action on twenty point one. Motion on twenty point two.
Sir, Judge, I'd make a motion on twenty point two that we allow you to sign the lease agreement once the, the county attorney has finished making the revisions to them that was on the draft that we looked at earlier.
Second. First by Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Gore. Opposed, motion carries. All right, Corey Taylor's on with us, so we will go to, uh, let's just go in and do one point two first. Discuss, consider designating two elected officials, representatives and two elected officials alternates to the twenty twenty-one East Galveston Area Council, General Assembly and Board of Directors.
It's on by voice only right now.
Okay, Corey is.
Can you hear us, Corey?
I can't.
What we're proposing, what we're proposing is Representative General Assembly and Delegate Board of Directors, Billy Combs, um, alternate Mark Tice, alternate General Assembly, Jimmy Sylvia, General Assembly, Jimmy Gore.
Motion to approve.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Second by Mr. Tice.
Sorry, Jimmy.
He was quick to approve that since his name, I don't know anymore. How long did you serve on that board, Gary?
Uh, I think I was probably thirteen, twelve, thirteen years. It's been a long time.
I know it has.
I took Bill's place. Hell, I went through the whole rigmarole.
I know. You served as chairman of the board. You know. All right, and we appreciate you doing it. I do especially.
I want it, so when will that go into effect?
It's twenty twenty-one appointment. So you're.
It goes in January?
Yeah, twenty twenty-one General Assembly and Board of Director. All right, those in favor?
Judge, I got, I got a question on that. You voted.
Go ahead. Motion carries. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm already serving on the T P C and an alternate on the, uh, TAC. Just in case Tice wanted to jump in or someone else as the primary on the, uh, H G A C. I mean, I can do it, but give somebody else that opportunity.
You guys talk about it and we can bring, um, I mean, we wouldn't go back and go over it again. Commissioner Tice, what do you think?
I'm willing to participate now, judge, and be the lead on that.
Okay, so, um.
I'm in my motion then.
All right, let's go back. We had a motion and second. It was approved. You want, you want an alternate motion, Gary, to put.
Sure.
General Assembly Representative Mark Tice, uh, alternate Billy Combs, and then the other two will stay the same, uh, Sylvia and Gore. Is that your motion?
I'm in my motion, yes.
Second.
Actually, it's a, it's a, um.
It's a amendment.
It's a new motion.
It's a new motion, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, by Nelson, second by Tice. And those in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. Mark, thank you. Billy, thank you.
No problem. Thankfully, when I, Commissioner Combs.
All right, Roden Bridge, Corey's on, uh, three point one, discuss, consider approving an interlocal cooperation agreement between Chambers County, Chambers County, District Number One, regarding expansion of Fisher Road. I don't know that we need Brandon Martin. Billy, you want to take this one?
Sure, I'll be happy to, uh. All of the, uh, from, from the M O U. that was drafted, we've taken that M O U. We came up and worked back to get actually the interlocal agreement put together. I want to thank everybody that helped work on this, you know, uh, Brandon Meyer was great working with us and, uh, T G S, uh, James Scott, everybody worked together. There was a lot of back and forth, but we came up with what we feel is a great, uh, agreement and I'd like to make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second.
First by Commissioner Combs, second by Mr. Nelson. And Billy said there was lots of time that we put in to getting this done, so I appreciate all the hard work. Any questions?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, three point two, discuss, consider abandoning a thirty-five foot utility easement Elm Drive in Sylvan, Curse subdivision. That wasn't Sylvia, that was Sylvan, as requested by Maryland Park Coac. Oh, Corey.
Okay, so this is, uh, down in, uh, lower part of West Chambers County. Then a map, it, I mean, it's, I don't even know why it was originally set up. I mean, it basically just goes right into the, you know, Cedar Bayou, um, banks essentially. I mean, it's, it's just a, a real quagmire location for both that utility location and the, uh, and the roadway right away. But, uh, anyway, yeah, I definitely recommend us abandon.
There's no utilities in there, is there? In that, in that easement?
No.
Do you know what?
Okay, not that we're aware of.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
First by Commissioner Nelson, second by Commissioner Tice. Questions, those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, three point three, discuss, consider adopting additional access driveway policy requirements for new commercial industrial development.
Uh, this is a follow-up from our discussion on last court. I've worked a little bit with Scott. I think originally, uh, he was concerned that, uh, the way it was written before, that we were going back and retroactively requiring all driveways in the county to be paved. Basically came back and just clarifying that this would only be new going forward. A new requirement for, uh, you know, some, some bit of, uh, surface that would be non-erodible. So, uh, questions?
I, I do, I do have a couple of questions. One is, uh, is that just for county roads?
Well, this would be for drive, commercial, industrial access essentially. You could still have.
Just for county roads or?
On county roads.
Driveways.
My understanding of, I said, that, I read it and it didn't say, it didn't say just county roads. I mean.
Well, Tech dot already requires that. I mean, we, I think, uh, you know, it'd be something that we'd work with Tech dot on to make sure that they're in agreement on stuff, uh, you know, for permitting that comes through, just making sure that we, uh, you know, we're in agreement and.
Well, we could add that language to it for county roads, I guess, is what I'm clarifying.
Well, I mean.
Why would you want to?
I, I, I think it's, so already a lot of our issues are for access regardless of where it goes to. I mean, you know, we're seeing a lot of issues over on, uh, the frontage roads of I-ten in both east and west part of the county. Our department already, you know, has the capability of, of riding tickets along state roads, not just county roads, so. Our sheriff's department already, you know, has the capability of, of riding tickets along state roads, not just county roads, so.
So the state, but if, if, if you're already doing it in the states, already got potential fine issues, all you really are, you're clarifying it for county roads as well. If they can already issue tickets for it.
Well, uh, well, they can't for mud, but, uh, I'm, the state doesn't always follow up on making sure that it happens. So I think this would just be for clarification that we're just going to be an, an additional checks and balances for state system to make sure that it gets done.
No, I, I agree. I don't think we need to change it just county roads because we permit prop, uh, projects all the time that they have access off of state roads, and this gives our county engineer a little bit of teeth to make sure that the pavement or something's put in to keep the mud off the road. I, I don't know why we want to specify county roads.
Right, so this would just be, you know, in the, in the development permit for commercial that we would make sure that they have something set up to keep mud off the roadway.
And Corey, I don't know that we want to limit it to commercial and industrial. I see people all the time that's doing even a residential home or whatever, and they track mud on. I think it would be for tracking mud on the road for period.
Yeah, but usually the driveway is the last thing they put in these residential. I mean, that's going to be.
Yeah, but we're trying to keep mud off the roads, you know, and the intent is to put bull rock or do some measures to keep mud off the road.
Well, yeah, but I mean, you're, you, you could put Caliche down and you could consider Caliche being pulled out there on the road be, but that'd be commercial. It doesn't say anything about residential.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, I think, I think we could probably work with, uh, you know, residential on an independent basis. You know, and it's not, you don't have near the amount of trucks and everything that's normally occurring. There are some isolated locations where that occurs, but I think by and far our utilities, our gas lines, industry are the ones that are really, you know, have the high end, uh, you know, potential, um, of causing dangerous situations along the roadways.
So what about temporary driveways?
Well, I mean, even temporary would need bull rock.
I mean, what about, what about these thin, um, rubber mats that you see these companies hauling around? Not the big thick wood ones, but the, the thinner ones. If I, I like a Dylan Kilgore, if they had a mat at that whole place in there and just dumped up, dumped off them mats, that would have helped tremendously. They wouldn't have got off in the dirt, but.
Well, actually, yeah, they already had, uh, they had timber mats and they had bull rock out there, but it wasn't maintained. So it would have been the same thing regardless of what they put out there. It, it, it's going to require maintenance of it.
I understand. Are you sitting, is there, is there a fine schedule? I mean, is it just by the sheriff's office? How's, how's that set up with text dot or us or how? They didn't say anything about that.
Well, there is already the, uh, state law that covers, uh, uh, tracking of mud out on the, the roadway. This would just be additional measures of, it could go up to a class B misdemeanor for negligently, uh, or knowingly tracking mud on the roadway. So in other words, you might have an accident, but this is going to help law enforcement by providing notice that the intent from the county is that mud is not supposed to be on the road, right?
Does this here give us the, the teeth to attach the landowner, not just the truck drivers and stuff like that?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that's where, that's where we're going. I mean.
Right, so we can, we, they can already write a ticket pretty, well, I mean, they have to basically see the mud coming off the tire somehow or another to write a ticket for tracking mud on the road. So if, if they go out there and mud's already on the roadway, I mean, you could essentially, you could see, well, it comes out of your, it looks like it starts here at the, at this driveway and then travels out. But for somebody that's a truck that's traveling down the road, you don't know if he just got into the mud or if he's tracking the mud. So you actually have to see it sling off the tire before he can do it. And it, so it kind of gets into a tough situation. And that's where we really need to be able to go back to the owner and say, look, we've, you, you've got a permit here, your, your, your property, you know, has already been established. You, you have to have a driveway that's non-erodible. You've got, your, your, your property is eroding onto the pavement out here. You know, we, we're about to step this up to a different measure if you don't take, uh, an active approach and keep, at keeping this dangerous situation under control.
What, what are you going to do with farmers?
I'm sorry?
What are you going to do with the farmers? I mean, the farmers have a lot of basically sometime dirt driveways and they get caught in a rainstorm and I mean, they try to get the mud off the road, but I mean, I, I'm just saying.
Oh, okay, so I mean, and that's. Right, so that's the, the measure of you, there's going to be an isolated incident that occurs here and there. But if you're having an accident of mud being tracked out every single day, then it's no longer an accident, right? And, and that's just, I'm not in enforcement, I'm not in, in enforcement. That's our sheriff's department and DPS. But this just gives them the measure to where we can give, provide the documentation and the backup for them making that decision. And I'm sure they're going to use the same judgment um, that you would, uh, Gary, in determining on whether or not they use the stick that they have. This just gives them the stick. Right now, they don't have it.
But do you need to make an attachments to it to what the fines are, what, I mean, what it could go up to to these people that are getting these permits and stuff like that, or do you?
This is not a, uh, there's no fine associated with my portion of it. This is just a requirement to, for development that they have to have a non-erodible surface. Um, as far as any fines, that all goes back to law enforcement and, you know, a ticketing, uh, the ticketing portion of it that goes back to transportation and state law.
Corey, I got a question on that thing. On, on this, the way it's worded right here, it says new commercial and industrial access driveway. Uh, I mean, we also got these temporary driveways, just like you were talking about on, uh, Kilgore Parkway where it was a pipeline companies doing that. So I think we need to clarify that, you know, for all access driveways, temporary or permanent. And then it also says per mity. And not, in not all cases are we issuing a permit. Are you proposing that any temporary driveway or access would have to have a permit to do that? Kilgore Parkway again, for instance, that was not a permitted access.
Right, so, yes, I think it would, I, I think that's the only way that we can do it is that we're going to have to permit the, the commercial. I mean, we already do it for residential. We had been saying that the, um, you know, you're building to a certain standard, as long as you're meeting that standard, it's not specifically permitted, but I just think that it needs to, we, we just need to go back and make sure that we're permitting those as well, and that's part of it. So we're already doing, we're already permitting for residential. It would just be that we're adding the commercial and industrial back, that they're a true per mity. Uh, in addition, the per mity would also fall under for utilities because they're permitted.
So then we need to clarify this to say anyone accessing to a county or state road within Chambers County has to have a permit.
Yes.
I mean, you got, you got thirty one eighty over there hauling tons of dirt out right now, stacking it on the corner there. And I mean, then we got ninety nine and we're fin, and fourteen oh nine, so I mean, all that's going to tie into it. They have to have a permit for that, they're at thirty one eighty and I ten, Corey.
Just now, because it's, I mean, they already, there, there's already an existing development that's there. That's Keem's location.
Somebody asked me that.
I know, I mean, they're stacking that dirt. I mean, we got how they're stacking that dirt there, but I mean, they're tracking out. So what I'm getting to is, I mean, we're talking about doing this here, but we, we've got tons of people tracking on our roads every day. And I mean, yeah, we need to make it safe. We need, because when it does rain, it's slick, and I mean, it's a hazard. But I mean, if we're wanting to start looking at text dot stuff, I mean, I mean.
Jimmy, trust me, I yell at them all the time.
I, I know. I mean, I was on there the weekend, and I mean, it's just, and, and it all comes with growth, and I understand that, but I mean, after.
Community. You know, I applaud Corey for trying to do something about it, you know, we may not be able to totally stop it, but we can damn sure help.
Yeah, I mean, as, I'm not saying this is perfect. I mean, there's going to be some temporary situations of which, you know, maybe we don't get to, um, but we've got a lot of permanent situations out there. They're just non-stop uh, issues, uh, back and forth, like they, you know, they'll do well for a while, and then they go back to, uh, fighting and cause, which causes sliding. I mean, but, uh, you know, it's just, it's, it's just one of those things, and right now we don't have any real teeth, so.
Well, you can, you can go to ninety nine as well on the construction of ninety nine and where they shoot across the road there. I mean, big off, off-road trucks, they, you know, you just can't hardly keep the dirt from sticking to those big tires.
Right.
I mean, they drag and dirt out on the road all the time.
Right, true.
So do we need to make a motion on this or?
Yeah, what kind of motion are you looking for, Corey?
Well.
To approve the additional access?
Ask that if you want, if y'all believe that we need to tweak it a little bit, um, I'm, I'm okay with that. I mean, I've heard a lot of good suggestions.
So you want to. Judge, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we, uh, let Corey work with our, uh, county attorney to come up with a, uh, requirement for excess driveways onto state and county roads in Chambers County to control mud getting on the roads.
You're looking for a policy?
I'm looking for a second.
Second.
First back to Commissioner Combs, second back to Mr. Tice.
And answer your trick question, Jimmy, uh. Yeah, I guess it would be a policy. It would definitely be a requirement to go within our other, uh, ordinances and, uh, subject to our regulations. Something be a policy or.
Jimmy, Jimmy, you and Mark work with Corey. As the media, Gary and we, we got Gary and Billy pretty busy, so. Don't work with him on that. I'll get in that, and then legal when you get. All right, I got a motion in second. Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to vote no on that. No. I, I don't think, I, I don't think, I don't think we need a motion to require somebody to come up with a policy, um. Keep mud off the road. I mean, I, I think that that's something that we could do. Back that, that we could all live with, uh.
And it may, maybe what comes out of it.
That's possible, but I mean, why, why would we need somebody to, why would we order a motion to put that together where they can put it together and bring it back and then vote on it? So that's, that's my votes, no.
Okay, Gary, got it. No vote, Commissioner Nelson. Three, four, discussing center entering memorandum of understanding. Jefferson County Drainage District Number Six for possible grant for watershed flood mitigation study through the Texas Water Development Board, Corey.
Um, okay, we just got this right before, well, right at the deadline for, uh, submission last week. Uh, so we threw this in, Jefferson County leading this, uh, this, uh, Texas Water Development Board, similar to the one that we already have and had offered out to several, uh, partnership. You know, Liberty and Mont Belvieu and Dayton.
Yeah, Jefferson County D D sixes.
So, uh, right, so this is, uh, Jefferson County Drainage District Six. Um, and we follow, a very small portion of the east part of the county falls in this study.
Very northeast corner. It's on page forty one.
Right.
It didn't, it didn't have any breakdown of how any cost sharing would be or. They're not asking for any cost right now, just our support.
Right, so I mean.
They might come back and ask for costs. Yeah, that's what I was looking at. It had to be very little. The match was two million dollars, but we do it a, a portion.
It was two and a half million, somewhere in that range, but.
To me, and a hundred and twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
So, um, just offering up, I mean, you know, I think anywhere where we can partner with, you know, all the other counties and groups to, uh, look at things more regionally, I think is good, um, as long as we're not, uh.
Is this going through our economic development people as well as this here? I didn't see them on here if you know, I was asking. We, like Corey said, we just, um, before it went on court.
Right.
All they're asking for us is MOU to support the project. And I'm, one, one of the questions I had, I just thought of is uh, TB CD, I wonder if they ask them to support it also.
Good question.
I'll ask, or Corey, you can, you know, somebody.
Yeah, I'll talk to, uh, to James and Alan and see.
Okay.
What they know about it. But yeah, I mean, at this point, you're not asking, we're, we're not approving a certain amount that we're putting into it. So I mean, for us to be on board, I think is similar to what others have kind of done with our, uh, submission. So I, I mean.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with it. I just want to make sure we weren't, I mean, I, because I didn't see anything in there about cost sharing, anything like that there. I mean, I am fully in support of looking at our drainage regionally, so. Yeah, and it is, it's a regional issue, so. Most from back to Mr. Gore.
Yes, sir, second.
Second, I come to Tice, right? Was it?
Right.
All right, any other questions? Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries, three, five, discuss consider setting a public hearing. He wrote E W four Johnny Jennings Drive, Commissioner Combs.
Yes, according to the, uh, paperwork that, um, our county attorney sent out, we need to give at least a two week notice for a public hearing to set a public hearing date for this. So I'd like to set a public hearing, uh, make a motion that we set a public hearing date for the November twenty fourth court.
Second.
First from my Commissioner Combs, second by Commissioner Nelson. To set, it was Tice?
No, I second.
Okay, uh, for November twenty fourth at ten AM. Any other questions? Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Parks and Recreation, six point one, discuss consider arena rental fees for the White Spark Arena in the. Commissioner Gore. Yes, I, uh, we'd looked over this here and with Kirk and everybody, and Kirk's on board with it, that, um, we can get these, we've named, we've done a study around us, and this is basically in line with what everybody else charges for their facility as well. So I mean, um, I'd like to see this implemented. I mean, we can generate more revenue within the community, uh, with the stores and the restaurants and everything, if we'd get a little more, uh, competitive with our pricing. That'd be my motion to. First back to Mr. Gore.
Second.
Second back to Mr. Tice.
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
On the, uh, i- i- in the packet, it's got, you know, when you're showing the rates, it's got one employee forever rental, two employees forever rental. Is that county employees that have to be available during that rental time?
The, uh, at, at these events, uh, in small events like horse shows and stuff like that, they'd been having two employees out there, and I don't think it'd been utilizing as well as they should, and it was just an additional cost for the people renting the, um, arena. And so what we've done was done, uh, one employee, but yes, it's a county employee that has to be on site to assist with anything going on. And they're paying its twenty dollars an hour. And the, the event people are paying, uh, for that employee.
In addition to the event rental rate?
In addition to the event, yes.
What, what is the rate right now, uh, Jimmy?
Uh, you know, I'd have to look and see, but I'm thinking around a thousand dollars or something like that.
So, the thousand dollars for what? The out of county or?
That, that was for in county, and then the tractor fee was higher, and then, um, the, they were requiring two county employees at, uh, even the small events. And then, um, and you couldn't, you couldn't rent an event, uh, at, uh, for less than a thousand dollars a day, once you added up all the fees.
Two county would be forty dollars an hour.
Yeah, I, I think we need to clarify that. It's like twenty dollars per employee or, or forty dollars.
Yeah, it should be twenty dollars per employee per hour. Are you committing your motion to? Yes, sir. Uh, correct that, and your second too, Commissioner Tice?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions?
Well, I mean, it's, it's still, you know, you still can run up pretty high numbers, you know, I, I just didn't know, so, so what?
But I mean, for in-county.
Shows that we've been doing it, I mean, how many, how often are we renting now?
Well, I mean, it's been shut down because of COVID. We now started opening it back up.
But before, when we weren't shut down, do you have any?
The Winnie Arena was still under construction, so it's been shut down.
Yeah, it just got finished.
You know, there, there for a while there, I thought, I thought we, we were so low that everybody was coming over and taking advantage of it and we weren't, you know, even county, I mean, county.
Well, I mean, what we did for the rental, our people that use the arena, we done away with out-of-county people that can be members. Because we had so many out-of-county members that were bringing in all sorts of livestock and everything else and using the arena. Our in-county people were not able to get in and use it.
But it says out-of-county rental, $600 though.
For, for events.
Just for an event?
Yeah, it was membership, so.
The memberships, we done away with out-of-county membership.
So what are we, what are we doing about the, the keys and stuff like that? Have we done away with that too?
No, we still have the keys and the keys are changed once a year, and if we have a special event, the locks are changed for that event and emails are sent out to all the members saying that the arena is closed for this event.
Do, do you know how many members we have?
I do not off the top of my head, no, sir.
So the ones that, or what, are we offering any kind of a, since we've been closed for the COVID, are we offering any kind of refunds or anything?
We have prorated it by the month and then anyone, we've set a senior, a senior rate of, for whatever the rental is, for the membership is. I think it's 250 a year for regular and then for senior rates, it's 125. And then we prorated everything because of the COVID for when it was shut down.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? Do none of those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries, I think we're done with page one. Go to the consent agenda, let's start out with number 23. Approved the Otis Elevator Service Agreement for maintenance repair of the courthouse elevator. Mr. Peel would like the motion to read. Authorized County Attorney Mike Selby to complete negotiation and execute the Otis Elevator Maintenance Contract for no greater than the buyboard rate of $195.01 per month plus cost.
I move.
First back to Mr. Combs, second back to Mr. Gore. Questions, those in favor? Those, motion carries, all right, any, start precinct one. Commissioner Gore, anything on the consent agenda?
No, I think I reached out to everybody, Judge.
Okay, Commissioner two.
I'm good, Your Honor.
Commissioner three, y'all must be hungry.
I'm hungry. Starving.
Nothing, Gary?
I'm nothing.
Commissioner four, Billy?
Yeah, I'm going to be easy this time, but on the EMS, we got a lot of new employees for our EMS. Does anybody know why we've got so many?
When, when I spoke with Ron, and the part-time employees you're talking about, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Sounds like a lot.
It, it, it is, we're trying to fill gouts because of COVID. I mean, a lot, a lot of people are in and out, so we're, we're trying to make sure that the community is taken care of.
All right, that's all I got.
All right, entertaining motion to approve the consent.
So moved, Judge.
Much back to Mr. Tass.
I'll second.
Second back to Mr. Combs.
All right.
Oppose, motion carries, we are done, 12:21 p.m. Thank you, gentlemen, you have a good day, go get some lunch, nothing further coming for the court.